Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Southfield City Council's regular meeting being held on Monday, December 13th at 6:00 PM via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Present.
Brightwell. Cruz. Frazier is having a few technical difficulties. Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum. Did Hoskins say present?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Ann Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum. We excuse Councilman Frazier momentarily because he's having some technical difficulties.
Okay, thank you. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now have a presentation from our state representative, Ms. Kyra Harris Bolden.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you to this honorable body. Thank you to our clerk and mayor. I appreciate you giving me time to address this very honorable body, and I thank you all for everything that you are doing for the city of Southfield. Just wanted to give a quick update as a part of my quarterly update as my commitment, because sometimes people can't attend monthly coffee hours or attend our town hall, but do want to give my information upfront as we go into the holidays. The email to the office is kyrobolden@house.mi.gov. If you have any concerns, please contact our office. You can also go to housedems.com/bolden if you want to sign up for our e-newsletter. That's the best way to keep up to date on our coffee hours. We do them monthly. We do town halls quarterly. And as you all know, I try to go to as many community events as possible, but just wanted to put my contact information upfront. You can also follow me on social media, on all social media platforms. It's @KyraHBolden on Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter, and I try to put a lot of the information that we put in the e-news out as well. This has been a very busy, busy year for the community, and I think that might even be an understatement, but I appreciate the relationships that I've built with you all and working with you all to make sure that our community has been taken care of. So as far as appropriations, we had massive appropriations from the CARES dollars, from the American Rescue Plan, and we're going to be having some more money at the state level as a result of the infrastructure bill package. We are not done appropriating all the money from the American Rescue Plan, believe it or not, but we did appropriate a lot of it. And for our community, for the 35th House District, in which I represent, which is Southfield, Lathrow Village, Beverly Hills, Bingo Farms, and Franklin, we were able to secure a million dollars in the budget. Six hundred thousand will go to Southfield for Parks and Rec for Carpinter Lake. We got two hundred thousand for Lathrow Village, and then another two hundred thousand for Franklin for infrastructure. As we're going through this appropriation process, I know I've been in contact with a lot of you all, but if you have any suggestions on how we can spend the billions of dollars that we have, we'd definitely appreciate you sending that information over to me so I can advocate as best as possible. Want to update you on some of the bills that have passed the House or that I'm working on. A House Bill 4856, I'm sorry, passed the House on November 4th. This bill would protect the identity of parties proceeding anonymously in a civil action when they allege sexual misconduct, and it would exempt them from disclosure under the Freedom and Information Act. So before I was elected to serve you, I was an attorney and a civil litigation attorney. And so as a member of the judiciary, I have also taken on the mantle of criminal justice reform and protecting victims, and so that's kind of one of my big things that I have been focused on. So I had gotten about five bills passed by the House. That was the most recent one. But again, follow me, and I can update you on some of the other ones. Did want to let you all know, I do have a financial literacy town hall coming up in January, January 24th. Again, please sign up for my e-news for more information about that. And our coffee hours jointly with Senator Jeremy Moss will start back in February. And again, thank you to this honorable body. I appreciate your time. I will answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you again for joining us, and thank you for that update, Representative Bolden. We appreciate you taking the time to just keep us informed. And I will open up to council for any comments or anything that you'd like to add or ask of our representative. And I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
I would just like to say thank you for your update. We very much appreciate it, and also thank you for your service to our community. We do appreciate everything that you do, Representative Bolden.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Brightwell.
I too want to thank you for the updating. I definitely appreciate the periodic update throughout the year, and I want to thank you also for advocating for us to get six hundred thousand dollars. And thank you very much. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz.
Yes, I too also want to thank our state representative, Bolden. I think we're very lucky as a city to have someone like her representing us with her background and everything, and I think we've said that over and over again. I have one quick question. I was just curious because I didn't really look very deeply into it, but was your district affected at all by any type of gerrymandering or whatnot after the census?
Yes. Okay. Am I still muted? Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So all of the districts are going to look very, very different. There are very few districts that will remain the same. I will say that please get involved, and thank you for that point, Councilman Cruz. Really tune into redistricting. I can't say too much because it affects me, but I can say that Southfield, under the proposed map, which there are four that have been approved, under the proposed map, Southfield would be split into thirds for representation in the House, and not equal thirds, but so that is just something to look at. And so I encourage anyone listening to give your impact or give your input and feedback on which maps you think would serve the community best. I will not comment again because it affects me, but just for the people listening, it does, every single map does split Southfield into thirds in some type of way. And so please get involved and make sure you have your voice heard on redistricting.
Sure. I understand you, that point, Representative. I just wanted the people more so to know too, and that we need to be aware of what's happening around us. Things may be changing, and it's important for us to be aware of how that's going to affect all of us. So thank you very much for commenting on that, and I'm sure we'll have more to talk about moving forward. Thank you very much, and again, we appreciate your service in Lansing.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Frazier, are you on now?
I am on now. I did get to the meeting late, so I didn't hear the presentation, but I am assured by the comments that the other council people have made that she is saying the things that I expected her to say, that she's got us in the palm of her hand and that she's doing the best that she can for us. I would only like to make one comment from Councilman Cruz, and that is, how do we get our hands on the maps so that we can take a look at them? And the second piece of it is, I know you're a little hesitant about speaking about it, but if it affects you, it affects all of us, and we want you to be with us. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for those comments. You can go to michigan.myredistricting.com to look at the proposed plans. Again, for the House, there are four maps, and again, they're shaking things up on the congressional level and on the Senate level. So you know, look at those maps. You're able to comment and say whether you dislike or you like a map, and I very much appreciate your comments, and I love this community. I would love to continue to represent this community, but I also realize that the community doesn't belong to me as a representative, and I know that, but hopefully I will continue to be able to serve you. If you go to michigan.myredistricting.com, and you can look at the maps and approve or disapprove maps and give your feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins.
Well, I don't have anything to add other than, of course, it is always a pleasure working with Representative Bolden in Lansing. I can assure you all that she has been a great representative for us, and I am looking forward to continuing to work with her. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum.
No, I have no questions. I do appreciate the time and the information that Representative Bolden spent with us this evening, giving us some updates, and thank you very much, and we hope to see you more often next year.
Thank you. Mayor Cyver.
Good evening. We're very fortunate to have Kyra Harris Bolden representing us. She's done a fantastic job, and it is distracting to me that Southfield will not have the opportunity to have her representative. Representative, I did have one question, and that is, we really need road funds for neighborhood streets, and I'm wondering if there's any update on additional road funding
I'm sorry, Mayor. It's very hard for us to hear you. I don't know if you are speaking away, you know, I don't know, but it was very hard for us to hear you. Would you mind asking your question again?
I'll repeat that. I'm sorry. Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. What I said was, I think Representative Bolden has done a phenomenal job for us. Regrettably, hearing that she will not represent the entire community, I think that's a loss for us. My question was, we need infrastructure dollars, particularly for neighborhood streets, and I'm wondering if there's any update on additional road funding.
Thank you for your question, Mayor. We are working very hard and very diligently to make sure that Southfield gets additional infrastructure and road funding, especially with the infrastructure bill package that has come down. We're also looking at some supplemental money as well. So we're looking at all angles to make sure that Southfield gets as many dollars as possible. Rest assured, we are fighting hard every day to get more money for Southfield, particularly for infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Zorn.
Thank you, Representative, for being with us tonight. We appreciate you coming here, taking the time out of your hectic schedule. I echo the mayor's comments about infrastructure. We also want to make a plug for more money going into economic development. We like some of the conversations we're having with our friends at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the Bridges to Brownfield money, as well as place making funds. We're excited about the infrastructure at the federal level, from energy to our ability to make sure that Southfield is doing its part to address climate and climate change. But we applaud you for just coming out and joining us with the frequency that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Representative Bolden. Thank you for coming out, and again, thank you for the updates.
Thank you so much for having me. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you as well. Thank you, everyone. Next, we would have our appointments, and since we have none, we will move right to minutes. In council, we had three sets of minutes, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes from November the 8th, our regular meeting minutes of November 15th, and our regular meeting minutes of November 22nd of 2021.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman.
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes, Item A, Committee of the Whole Meeting of November 8th, 2021, the regular meeting minutes of November 15th, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of November 22nd, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the approval of our minutes, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of November the 8th, 2021, regular meeting minutes of November 15th, 2021, and regular meeting minutes of November 22nd, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Frazier.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
And Banks.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda items. We have Items A through J. Council, is there anything that you'd like to pull for discussion? Okay, hearing. Yes.
This is Councilman Cruz. I'd like to just move approval for consent agenda items A through J.
Councilman Mandelbaum's support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of consent agenda items A through J. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cruz.
Yes.
Frazier.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
And Brightwell.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have our public hearing and site plan. We have a public hearing for PZR ODD 21-0004, the rezoning request with overlay development district development agreement of RAND Construction Engineering Company to rezone 1.98 acres of property to ODD Overlay Development Districts with underlying OS Office Service, and create a master development plan and agreement to allow for the construction of a 123,744 gross square foot storage facility with first floor retail.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Planner Crowe. Can we go to the next slide, please? As you stated, addition of RAND Construction Engineering on behalf of owner Southfield 12 LLC would like to rezone to Overlay Development District from existing OS Office Service to develop mixed-use retail redevelopment with climate-controlled self-storage component located at 29200 Southfield Road. Next slide. The existing site has an underperforming office building. Next slide. The existing zoning is OS, and it's located in the north Southfield Road subarea, which makes it eligible for an Overlay Development District consideration. Next slide. This is a view from Southfield Road looking at the existing office building. Next slide. There was a question during the study session about existing self-storage facilities in the city of Southfield. They have been detailed on the map on the screen, and in your packet was some additional information about each of those storage facilities, number of units and square footage. Next slide. We did ask the applicant to provide self-storage facilities within a three-mile radius, which is their typical market area for self-storage. Next slide. And within that three-mile radius, there's a population of over 101,000 individuals, approximately 43,000 households, over 90% self-storage occupancy rate. There are several competitors within three miles, but only one has modern amenities, and the national average of self-storage is 5.9 square feet per person. In this area, the supply is only 2.9 square feet per person. I believe they responded that between 40 and 60% of the households are actually within the city of Southfield. Next slide. Again, we don't typically look at market value for traditional site plan, but the Overlay Development District does take that into consideration. The city assessor did a simple assessment of the current market value of 1.2 million, the taxable value about 638,000, and annual taxes at 42,000. The proposed multi-use storage would have a market value of approximately 5.6 million with a taxable value of about 2.8 million and generate annual taxes at 185,000. Next slide. This is the layout of the building on the site with landscaping. Next slide. And then a detailed landscaping plan. Next slide. This is roughly a three-story, approximately 50-foot-high new construction with retail facing Southfield Road and internal entry. All of the storage units will be accessed from the interior of the building. Next slide. This is a concept rendering of the building looking from Southfield Road eastward. It has landscaping and streetscape features. It does have the art feature up on the upper left-hand corner of the building, and you see the various mixed-use retail on the first floor. Next slide. Another rendering looking southeast onto the property from Southfield Road. Next slide. And then here's an aerial view of the building as it's situated on the site. Next slide. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it over to the applicants if they have any further comments to make prior to the public hearing, and then between the applicants and myself, we'll be happy to try to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Hello, Andy Klein here with Chuck Fuzon from RAND Construction and Eugene Sarrazin from Southfield 12 LLC, the developer. I think there was an excellent presentation. We're here to answer any questions. I don't think we have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing for PZR ODD 21-0004. I'd like to declare the public hearing open, and if there's anyone that would like to speak to this topic, please push star 3 so you could be recognized by the clerk.
Madam President, at this time, there is no one that wants to, under attendees that have raised their hand for public comment, I will go the extra mile and unmute all of the panelists to see if anybody wanted to say anything as well.
Okay, well, hearing none, I will now declare that the public hearing is now closed, and I will go with council, and I'll start with you, Councilman Brightwell.
Yes. Terry, did you say that it was 40% of the household or population is in Southfield?
I'm gonna direct that back to the developer. I did ask them to look into that, and if you could address your service area, what percentage of your service area, the three miles, are actually Southfield, either household or population?
The, yeah, the facility, let's see here, 60% of the Southfield residents are within a three-mile radius of the facility.
So is that households or population?
That's population.
Okay.
Okay. Let's say, how long would, what is the duration from start to finish to have this completed if it's approved up and running?
I would say it's probably an 11-month project.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's me. I'll tell you, that's enough for me right now. Thank you.
And I'm just gonna ask Chuck and Andy if you could speak up a little louder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz.
Yes, I just wanted to say 11-month project starting when?
From the time that we break ground.
What's the proposed time again?
That's really just a matter of working through, we would, I would say it would be summer because we have to get our engineered drawings approved by the city and finish our drawings and apply for a building permit, and that's gonna definitely take, you know, four or five months, and then we would break ground. That would be the goal.
Okay, so probably about April or May, June of next year?
Exactly. That's more likely.
Twenty twenty-three, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, that's all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier.
Yes, I'm gonna speak against this project for a number of reasons. First reason is the property that you've selected is some of the more, the highest cost property in the city, and directly across the street from there, we've had a knock-down, drag-out fight to get that strip mall built, and I don't think that that's gonna be positive as far as that strip is concerned, especially with Applebee's. Took us some time to get Applebee's in because they said they weren't gonna come to Southfield, but the data that shows the number of storage spaces, there's 19 storage spaces already in Southfield, and within the three-mile radius, there's a ton of them, and the number of households, the number of potential customers are already in Southfield, and if they needed storage space, probably they're already in the storage spaces that are there, that are already in Southfield. And I am very sensitive to the fact that this is the kind of construction that, when it's built, it looks fancy and shiny and... this is the kind of construction that, when it's built, it looks fancy and shiny and all. But it's in a, in a community that is primarily minority. And I've been listening to a lot of people that are experts talk about, this is what happens in minority, basically minority communities, is people come in, they build some stuff, and then when the value has started to deteriorate, they walk away from it, and the community is left with that, and they can't get rid of it. And it adds to the negative view of the community. So I'm speaking no in behalf of this project.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Councilman Hoskins?
Yeah, no questions or comments for me on this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. You know, I understand what Councilman Frazier is saying as it relates to this property and everything else, but you know, this property has sat vacant for so long. So, you know, I believe that with the retail in front, and you can't really tell that it's a storage facility because of that, even when I drive further down Southfield Road, the one next to Target, sometimes I just forget that it's a storage facility because it looks so much retail in the front. I think that this will be, will be a good project and will actually bring more people into this area to use those retail stores as well. So I have no further questions. I think this is a good project for this location.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I think this is a nice project, and I believe that there is a need for additional facilities like this within our city. If anyone has ever tried to rent a unit, most of the city facilities like this, there are no spaces available. A lot of people are working from home, and they are no longer in the office, and they use this as storage, and they go in and out. And I think this will be a nice complement, especially to that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
I'm in support of this project. I think, as Councilman Mandelbaum said, with the retail, and the site is really a dead site right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And our city administrator Zorn?
I have no comments, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Terry, did you wanna?
Yes, we made a favorable recommendation, subject to the conditions in our resolution for the city council's consideration. This is part of an overlay development district, which will have an agreement. And anything that you approve, should you approve it, will be subject to final review by the city attorney and myself.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve PZRODD21-0004.
Support, Councilwoman Banks? Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, in support of and approving PZROODDD21-0004. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Frazier? Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Madam Secretary?
Frazier?
Yes, I don't know if you heard me, because I checked and I was on mute. My answer is no.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, the next item of business would be to introduce ordinance number seventeen-four-seven.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I introduce item, introduce ordinance number one-seven-four-seven.
Support, Councilwoman Banks? Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the introduction of ordinance number one-seven-four-seven. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Frazier?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next items are agenda items that are here for discussion, and our very first item is the Southfield Police Department's custodial services for police buildings.
Good evening, President, and members of council and the community. This is Chief Barron. I'll be reporting out on this item. And so, yes, the Southfield Police Department, we are requesting approval of the custodial services agreement for the Southfield Police Facilities. The company that will be awarding this contract will be responsible for our labor, our equipment, supplies, and supervision that will be necessary to provide us the services that we need. The services that we are in need of would include cleaning the floors, the carpet, dusting locker rooms, office spaces, the detention facility, commonly known as our lockup, windows, bathrooms, and a host of other things, particularly in times of emergencies. On October twenty-sixth of this year, the Persian Department did request proposals for janitorial services in conjunction with the police department. Those bidders did participate in a meeting of contractors. They were able to tour our facilities and to formulate questions. Of the thirteen contractors who attended, there were five that met our needs. The contractor that came out on top is RNA Facility Management of Ann Arbor. They had a grand total of one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-six. The other companies ranged from one-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand and all the way up to over two-hundred-thousand. The RNA Management Group, they are the ones that currently have our contract. They've had the contract for roughly three years. We are satisfied with their work performance. In addition to that, as mentioned before, they have experience in cleaning our lockup. Again, we are satisfied with them coming out on top. The expenditures to include the one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, we are adding a ten percent contingency of eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars, which is added to the total in the event there's emergencies or floor strippings or anything we need that comes up unexpectedly. So the grand total will be one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and sixty cents. The funding is available through the police administrative contractual professional account. And with all that being said, we are requesting approval of this contract.
Got a little jumbled at the end. I don't know if that was on your end or our end, but thank you for the presentation. And I will now, and I will now open up to with you, Councilman Cruz?
I have nothing on this matter. Sounds good. I think Chief's done a good job in the presentation, so no questions.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, I do have one question. In the bid, do the, the people that, did the people that bid on this, do they bring their own supplies, or does the city provide the supplies, the cleaning supplies?
So the suppliers are responsible from the actual contractor to bring their own supplies.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. To the chief, when did the Southfield custodial staff stop servicing the police department building?
So I'll probably need some help from someone else who has a historical aspect on that. Since I've been the chief, it's been the RNA Facilities Management Group. So somebody had to help me out on that one.
Counsel, President, this is Administrator Zorn. It has been quite a while. I'm sorry, I don't recall the exact year. I actually think it was under my predecessor. It's not been during Chief Barron's time, and I think this goes back to, I'm thinking 2010, but we can check on that.
This is Zorn?
Yes.
Through the chair, this is Nikki. It's been approximately since 2015-16, actually, because we've, only one other company has had this contract.
When did, is that when facilities stopped, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so, right now, we presently do not have anyone on our custodial staff servicing the police department?
My understanding, Councilwoman Banks, is no.
The, Mr. McGreen has just stepped in my office. The answer to that question is no.
Okay, and then how many, approximately how many people will, is RNA proposing for the police department to, for custodial services? I don't know if I saw that in here either.
If memory serves me correctly, this, it's approximately four people.
That is correct. Nikki, it's four people. They kind of rotate off days, but four people is the total.
Okay, you answered all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell? Councilman Brightwell? He must be muted.
I'm sorry, I'm here. I, my computer screen is playing with me. So I really have no question, but I do recall, since I've been on council starting in 2016, this issue would come up. And Chief, my only question is always the same question. Who, the, I'm assuming that the security of the individuals, the security clearance for the individual is being, but? Yes, it's part of any individual entering our facility for any type of services. They must go through a thorough criminal background check, and all individuals who are on this contract have admitted requirements and have passed our background. Okay, yeah, there's no problem. It's just a perfunctory question I have every time this comes up. I knew I asked the same question, but, and I figured it would be an affirmative answer. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Cyver?
No questions.
Okay. And anything from you, City Administrator Zorn?
No additional comments. We are, as this is a hybrid meeting, requesting authorization this evening.
Thank you. Counsel?
Madam Chair, a move that we approve this item is presented.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the Southfield Police Department Custodial Services for the police building's janitorial contract. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes. Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you, Chief. Our next item is the authorization to contract for emergency medical billing services.
Good evening, Madam President, Counsel, and Mayor. This is Fire Chief Johnny Menefee. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
The Southfield Fire Department currently responds to over thirteen-thousand emergency medical calls annually. An integral part of the Fire Department's EMS program is medical billing. EMS, EMS MC, a company out of Salem, North Carolina, has been doing our billing for the past six years. This company allows residents, visitors, and our business partners to look up their bills and pay online, which cuts down a lot on wait time on the phone. The Fire Department has been very pleased with EMS billing's customer service, their software, their online dashboard, as well as real-time data. The EMS MC billing contract provide all-inclusive software from their company. The contract is for two years, beginning December first, 2021, through November thirtieth, 2023, with an optional one-year extension. The fiscal impact of this is contingent upon the revenue generated. The annual rate will be four-point-five percent, which is a decrease of the four, our current four-point-nine percent. Fiscal of 2021 EMS revenue is budgeted at two-point-two million. Fees for this service is budgeted at one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. This recommendation is being made without competitive bid by contracting with, through another agency, namely the Fort Myers Beach Fire Control District out of Florida, agreement for service for billing. Tonight, we are requesting that we enter into a contract with EMS Management Consulting out of Salem, North Carolina, that will provide medical billing over the next two years with an option of a one-year extension. But yield back to you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Chief. Counsel, and I'll start with you, Councilman Frazier?
Does this billing firm, do they follow up on the no pays? How is that handled?
Yes, they created that course that we can, we can see who's paid. Currently, right now, the billing, our software goes from January to December. Currently, we're just over two-point-four million to date receiving. We have another one-point-three million out for collections. We have a collection rate of sixty-nine-point-seven percent. You know, our biggest would be insurance. Our insurance is eighty percent collection. Medicare is seventy-seven percent collections, and Medicaid is thirty-four percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this. It's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No, I have no questions, and I think the fact that we're getting a discount makes things even better, so I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
No questions at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our mayor, Cyver?
I trust the judgment of the department. No question.
Thank you. And our city administrator Zorn?
I have no additional comments. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counsel?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to move approval for the authorization to contract for emergency medical billing services.
Support.
Thank you, it's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the approval of the authorization to contract for emergency medical billing services. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have the authorization for additional expenditures for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, maintenance and repair services for the library.
Good evening, Madam President and Honorable Counsel, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
In November 2019, the council authorized a two-year contract with Bumler Mechanical for HVAC maintenance services with the option to extend the contract for one additional year. At this time, the library has opted to use one-year contract and is requesting to increase the repairs and services portion of the contrast, of the contract by $20,000. At this time, our staff has determined the additional funds would allow the contractor to address repairs that have been identified for winterization in the building, hot water booster pump, humidifier drums, to diagnose the air handler unit gear grinding, and to provide for the annual cleaning of chiller compression tubes, in addition to funds authorized for unanticipated repairs throughout the duration of this contract. Our staff is also requesting an additional $19,314 to pay for invoices which have exceeded the initial contract amount. The additional costs were related to two unanticipated issues, a communication failure between the Johnson control systems and the VAV boxes, which control the airflow and temperature within the library. This occurred in June 2020. The library did receive authorization from City Administration for Bumler to diagnose and restore communication and reconnect the boxes to the network. The second reason was for the continued power outages throughout the summer of 2021, which resulted in service calls to restart and control temperatures for both our central HVAC compressors and the Liebert unit, which oversees cooling all of our servers throughout the library. These events were not anticipated, but the library can mitigate these issues in the future by reinstating controls monitoring as a facet of regular preventative maintenance. And I have outlined how that can reduce costs and increase efficiency. Our newly requested expenditures for this contract total $39,314,000. And I've broken that down. These funds are currently available in the library repairs and maintenance budget and will be provided in future budgets as counsel may approve. And I am open for questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Field, that was a great presentation. Um, I will open up to counsel for questions, and I'll start with you, Councilman Hoskins.
Uh, no, no questions for me on this, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mandelbaum?
I, I have no questions either, I just, uh, I just think it's unfortunate that with this beautiful library, we keep having so many mechanical issues, but as long as we can keep getting them repaired, um, I guess that's, uh, it's part of the business. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Banks?
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you, and Councilman Frazier?
It was a good presentation, I have no questions.
Thank you, um, Mayor Frazier?
Uh, no questions, says this is necessary, thank you.
Thank you, and City Administrator Zorn?
I have no comments, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, uh, counsel? Are you ready?
Is, do you want to vote, you want to move this on to the consent agenda?
Well, our next meeting is next year, so if we could go ahead and vote on it, it would be fine.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve this item, uh, as presented.
Support, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you, it's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the authorization for additional expenditures for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning maintenance and repair services for the library as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins? Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. And ca- and counsel for our next item, item D has been pulled by administration to a date uncertain. So that'll be brought back to us at a later date. Our next item will then be authorization to purchase and install scoreboards for the Southfield Sports Arena.
Good evening, Madam President, good evening, counsel. Parks Recreation Department is requesting authorization to purchase scoreboards for the Southfield Sports Arena. Uh, the existing scoreboards have been in use for over 15 years. They've exceeded their normal length of functionality. Uh, due to their age, their operating issues that we're having, um, and the advancement of technologies, uh, these scoreboards need to be replaced. Uh, it'll enable our department to offer a high-quality service to our residents and other users of the facility. Purchasing Department identified two cooperative contracts and requested quotes from both. Uh, Nebco Sports of Greenville, Illinois, and Dectronics of Brookings, South Dakota. Um, the pricing was for the removal and disposal of, and disposal of the current scoreboards. Um, they're going to install two scoreboards, a timer clock and controllers. Um, both Nebco and Dectronics were, um, appropriate bids. We are, uh, recommending to go with Nebco for 16,595. Uh, there's a contingency added of 8,2975, so the expenditure will not exceed This wasn't anticipated in expenditure and was budgeted. I can take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counsel, I'll start with you, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, I, I don't have any questions. I know that, um, in the past, I've spoken with Ms. Fields about trying to find different ways to, you know, on the scoreboards or around the ice arena to get corporate sponsorships to help offset some of the costs, whether they're dasher boards or different signage around, and I think that's something that, that's going to be happening or going to be happening soon. So hopefully, when we need these large purchases, um, or that we have additional, um, money to go back into the sports arena to offset a lot of the, the cost from all the different use. But with, as it relates to the scoreboards, um, no, I, I'm happy that they're, they're being updated, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, thank you. Um, I agree with Councilman Mandelbaum that we should try to seek more corporate, um, sponsorships, um, for the ice arena. Um, I'm glad to see that this item was budgeted for. Um, how many organizations presently, um, is rent a proper room, award rent ice time from us? Uh, on a weekly basis?
Yeah, that's proper, uh, it is ice time. Um, currently, uh, Councilwoman Banks, we are the, uh, home ice for Detroit Country Day. Um, we have, uh, U of D Jesuit that is using us as their home ice. We have the, uh, Youth Hockey League, Little Caesars. Uh, we have Bell Tire, which is a, a very, uh, large, uh, organization, uh, take a lot of ice time. And we've really increased our tournaments and our special events at the, uh, at the ice arena.
Okay, so that's, that's good to know. And then approximately, is ice time like billed per hour?
It is.
And, and what is that approximately?
It ranges anywhere from 250 to 225, 200, depending on the, um, depending on the event and the amount of ice time that they commit to.
Okay, and then, eh, I'm sorry, it's been a while since I've been in the ice arena.
Oh, that's okay.
Do we have like concessions and different things like that, that we operate there, or no?
No, we, we are not operating any concessions there. We have locker rooms, the office, um, uh, we've got a meeting space, but, uh, currently there, there is no concessions.
So, and then would you, and then what percentage would you say the ice time is, um, rented out for the week, approximately?
Uh, I don't know percentage, but I can give you a yearly, uh, uh, average of, uh, revenue that we bring in for ice time.
Okay.
Anywhere from 225 to 250, 250,000. It's one of our highest producing revenue areas.
Okay, thank you. I know there was discussion at one time about whether the ice arena was, um, you know, even warranted and should we tear it down? And I'm glad to see that, you know, we are bringing in the revenues.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, uh, Ms. Fields, you did answer, answer one of my questions, what was the, uh, revenue for the arena? My next question will be, um, you stated that it was not competitively bid, that we have two bids there. What, what, why, why would you state it wasn't competitive, competitively bid?
It, it's two cooperative contracts that purchasing reached out to.
Explain that, please, please, I'm not sure, so, so we did not, they weren't competitive, they just gave us a number, what?
No, they, they are competitive, they're from a cooperative, so it's best pricing for those, for that piece of equipment. And those were our two cooperative contracts that purchasing worked with.
Okay. If you went outside that cooperative, it would have been competitive, that's what you're saying?
It would have been hi- higher pricing.
If I may, this is Nikki, Councilwoman Brightwell? Um, so I, to make it, um, a little clearer, we didn't actually go out to bid on our own, so we did not solicit bids from multiple vendors. We identified the two cooperatives that had already been competitively bid, and we asked the two of those vendors to give us pricing. Another entity bid those, um, put out a competitive bid, and they won it, so we just worked with them, so we didn't have to.
Okay, all right, fine, and very good, thank you very much. That's it, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cruz?
No, no, that was the same question I had, so I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, I really don't have any questions about, uh, scoreboards, but I do have another question. In this day of COVID, and the people are coming in and out, and then you're uh, renting a lot of ice time, do the locker rooms get deep cleaned? Uh, often enough that we aren't going to be, uh, uh, in a track, uh, tracing thing if somebody gets COVID?
Yeah, yeah, Councilman Frazier, we have done all the highest protocol. We also go along with the Michigan Hockey Association and all the recommendations. Uh, we are very, uh, conservative, so, which means that we go on the higher end of cleaning. Um, we do clean the locker rooms after each team. Uh, all users coming into the building are wearing masks, even on the ice. Uh, we clean all touchpoints, even for our staff, especially for our staff, for instance, on the Zamboni, uh, and in the offices. So we have a pretty strict, uh, cleaning schedule, uh, both during and in-between uses.
Okay, I know this sounds a little mercenary, but is the additional cost of cleaning, uh, invol- in the, uh, rental price?
Uh, it, it's not reflected in the rental price, we have, uh, staff there. Uh, we would have staff there, uh, no matter what. Uh, so whether they are cleaning, whether they are doing some bookwork, um, uh, it's really for that particular revenue center, it's not, uh, a, a charge above and beyond.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no, no questions for me on this one, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, um, Mayor Cyver?
No questions.
Thank you, and our City Administrator Zorn?
Yeah, Madam President, just a, a couple, a number of somewhat random comments. Uh, when we speak of the co- co-ops, I like to use the term, we are piggybacking or taking, uh, or utilizing other items that have been competitively bid. When we join a co-op, we're getting the benefit of other work, uh, done, and it allows the city to not have that dupative effort. The other item, I love hearing, uh, a willingness of counsel on sponsorships and that. I've long felt that the Southfield Sports Arena, uh, has an annual naming right that should be put out for, for bid, and I'd love to hear some thoughts from counsel, uh, at a later date or time as to what your thoughts are. I just want to comment also, ice utilization has been up the last couple of years. The rental rates that we are getting are where the market is at. It's interesting, uh, when I see these contracts come across my desk, we'll have different rates, uh, depending upon the time of day, uh, and the use, and the, the hours with less demand have a less, uh, price. Also want to compliment, uh, Austin Michaels and Terry Fields and her accounting team, that we have much better cost accounting relative to what this arena costs us to operate than we have during my 13 years here. Uh, my last comment is, I like to speak about our library and our, our recreation programs as our cultural attraction efforts. Not all the users are always Southfield residents, but if we can attract people to, uh, who are working here to maybe, uh, recreate here, and they choose to li- live here, that drives the demand and the value of our community. Finally, I, about a year ago, a, a, a young person who works in Southfield, um, was directed to the, uh, Jack Adams Ice Arena in Detroit, and I really found it frustrating that there wasn't enough options for a young person working here in Southfield, that he'd be directed, uh, to Jack Adams. And I, I see that changing as more and more ice utilization is coming to Southfield. Um, so we have a nice arena, we need to continue to make it, um, a destination and a place, uh, you know, make it as financially feasible as possible. So those are my, what I said, random thoughts. Please get some thoughts, though, to those sponsorships and naming rights, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval, uh, for authorization to purchase and install scoreboards for the Southfield Sports Arena.
Support.
Thank you, it's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the authorization to purchase and install scoreboards for the Southfield Sports Arena. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins? Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Thank you all. Uh, our next item is the annual adoption of the 2022 Poverty Exemption Guidelines under the MCL 211-dash, I mean, dot seven U.
Good evening, Madam President and Counsel, this is Assessor Probitowski. Before you tonight, I have a resolution to approve our annual poverty exemption guidelines. They have been updated to comply with the State Tax Commission's most recent guidance. We have an EMAR audit coming up for our 2022 assessment roll, and poverty exemptions were the biggest failure point for units in Michigan over the last couple of years, only 50% of units complied. So these guidelines have been brought into compliance by updating our application and asset test and removing any stipulations that are not allowable to exclude applicants. I'm also asking that counsel approve 100% exemption to those applicants that qualify for the exemption. With that, I can take any questions.
Thank you very much, uh, counsel, and I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I don't-
Um, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Uh huh, Councilman Brightwell?
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Oh, sounds good, have no questions.
Thank you, Councilman Frazier.
Yeah, I do have a question. Approximately how many people take advantage of this, do you know?
Yes, I do, um, this year was actually our our lowest amount of applicants, we had twenty-nine this year with only twenty-eight qualifying. That's half of what we had last year, and it's usually between forty and fifty.
Is there anything that we should be doing to make people aware of the fact that that is available?
We have it available on our website, I could um put it out with, you know, any of our newsletters that we have. Um, but generally, the people that qualify for this and need it are coming into the office asking for assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this.
Thank you, and Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation, and uh I I do have one question, does the, does this cover our vets as well?
That would be a separate exemption.
Thank, okay, thank you very much. Council, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor Cyver, did you have any comments?
No, this is something we have to do.
Okay, and uh City Administrator Zorn?
I have no comments, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, um, council? Yes.
Councilman Cruz, I'd like to move approval of the adoption of the twenty twenty-two poverty exemption guidelines.
Thank you, it's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell for the approval of the annual adoption of the twenty twenty-two poverty exemption guidelines. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you all once again. Our next item is the authorization for the purchase and installation of panic alarms in the forty-sixth District Court and City Department.
Evening, Council, this is Nikki once again from the Purchasing Department. Uh, purchasing on behalf of the forty-sixth District Court, our IT Department and our Police Department Dispatch um solicited bids for installation of panic alarms. Uh, we received three bids, our lowest bidder was Capital Electronics of Plainfield, Indiana. After going through an evaluation process, we learned that the type of distress buttons that we um received bids for, we could actually change them, we didn't need the level that we initially thought that we did. Therefore, the price decreased. Uh, we are asking for approval of approximately forty uh distress buttons um for a total price of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. The wireless funk, um the wireless system that we're actually requesting allows us at a later time to expand the um the system to other areas of the city as well as other features that the um the vendor uh has made available. So I am here to answer any questions that you have, and we also have on Meredith from Dispatch and uh IT.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I'll start with you, Councilman Brightwell.
Well, well, I have a question relative to um to council, and I'm assuming that maybe I perhaps my question is is ahead of the curve with respect to a panic button for council, and I think we had some, but they were inactive. Nikki, does this, then are we waiting for the reconstruction of the refurbishing of the uh council chamber?
Panic alarms have been identified for certain areas for the council as well. Didn't actually list those areas um in this in this letter, but they were in the bid.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Cruz?
Uh, yes, um, Ms. Lumpkin, I'm sorry, I I just wanted to uh be clear on what I heard, what I think I heard. Are we, are we? I guess, I don't wanna say the quality of this, but I mean, are we moving to another system that is I I know that it's gonna be costing us a little bit less, but it's providing the same level of quality, correct?
Yes, sir, it it is actually our understanding, uh we've talked to several references. Um, there was concern at first for for the reason that you just stated, are we looking at a lesser quality system? But after talking to the references, other municipalities, courthouses, uh hospitals who are actually using this wireless technology, they had no concerns, many of them have expanded their system. Uh, we also, part of our package, we have boosters to make sure we boost the signal. And this signal allows dispatch to receive the notices on their computers. Um, we can actually expand the emails as well, there's a number of functions where people can be involved in exactly what's going on at the time that the signal goes out.
Oh, great, okay.
This wireless function is actually a little bit more uh than what we expected it to be.
That's great, okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Frazier?
No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no questions, I think this is uh something that's needed, so I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I agree that this is something that's needed, but um, I do not see in this write-up um where the proposed um buttons will be located, or and is there a way that before we approve this, council can um see what's being proposed? I think it was one of my colleagues mentioned, um, you know, will council have the access to this and I I'm just curious where these forty stations are going to be, and I would like to see that before voting on it.
Okay.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum, I do have a question based on 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 that comment from Councilwoman Banks. I- is that something that we should be? The locations of these is probably something we should keep privately amongst the city staff and and council, but it's not something that we should be sharing in a public setting? Is that?
And I I I agree with you, but I don't recall. I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but I would like to see where they're gonna be located, cause what if you know, what if we feel it should be placed somewhere else?
Uh, Councilwoman Banks, this is Meredith Morgan. Uh, I agree with Councilman Mandelbaum that it's not wise to share that publicly. I can tell you just generally that they will be located in all of the areas that they were in before. And we are looking to identify other areas in talking to some of the other department heads that they would like to have uh buttons available to them. If that helps you.
Uh, I could, I could hitchack on that a little bit. Uh, security eh has its own protocol, and so whatever Meredith or or the police department desires, how they will roll this out, I think we'll we'll leave it up to them with respect to security for this particular facility, so. Uh, and to follow up on on Mrs. uh Banks, Councilwoman Banks, uh clearly if she wanna know where they are, we can, you know, hopefully the security people can privately make her aware where where they are.
Absolutely, I'm sure, um, I don't see any issue with sharing that information privately.
I I would appreciate that, cause I do have a concern in one particular area, but I don't know if it's covered or not.
Okay. Good discussion, thank you, um, Mayor Cyver?
I have no question.
Thank you, and our City Administrator Zorn?
I, Madam President, I'd like to just echo what uh Meredith Morgan has expressed, all those locations that have buttons presently, as well as additional locations will be. We could get a list of those locations uh in a, uh we can share that list uh with council, uh probably verbally, we can run through. Give us a day or two and we can put that together. I would like to move you forward, I I will share with you that there is, we'd like to get a couple of things put in in place in in the District Court.
Uh, Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, I would be most comfortable uh if the things that are shared with us are on a need-to-know basis. So in other words.
Security items here, is is that what you're saying? Okay.
Where the wherever the buttons are located on a need-to-know basis, there are places in the city where the city council people don't ever go. So why do you need to know where those buttons are at? So, it's on, I think on a need-to-know basis would be.
I support that, I support that.
And and it sounded like Councilwoman Banks had a, had just as one specific area that she was questioning, so.
Actually, yes, actually, there's two areas, so
Right, so I think.
Would like to contact me, um, I'm not asking for every single exact location. But not knowing exactly where they're placed, I don't know if my concerns will be met or not met, so.
Councilwoman Banks, and to the council, uh this system was actually quoted to us for forty panic alarms, but it can actually hold up to fifty. So if there was additional areas that we identified, this company can um accommodate more distress buttons on the system that they proposed.
Okay, so that will be for an additional cost though, correct?
Of course, yes, but we wouldn't have to upgrade to a whole new system or anything.
But we do have forty locations.
We do currently have.
We have today.
Yes.
So could it, could uh Councilwoman Banks just send the two areas of concern to Meredith? And forgive me for calling you Meredith, I just don't remember your last name, please, and um have her respond to uh Councilwoman Banks if they're covered, and if not, um then we can see how we can make that happen?
Madam President, you wouldn't, right now, if we're talking about security and we're talking about sending an email um that would tip off any type of tricksters that they could just forward you that email.
Gotcha.
As the uh City Administrator indicated earlier, um this may be something verbally to address.
Okay.
I'm more comfortable verbal, I do not wanna put it in writing, so. If someone could contact me tomorrow or later on tonight, that's that's all I'm asking, thank you.
Thank you, that would be great.
Mad, Mad Chair?
Yes.
I would like to move that we approve this item. Will the utmost security being employed, you know, we are dealing with these locations. I mean, let let the security people handle it, and I would, so Frazier, if somebody has a need to know they could perhaps be informed if they have a need to know, but uh given today's environment uh the utmost security with this particular item uh is, should be uh i- i- this should be a top secret within the city of Southfield, and only those individuals whoever need to know should know it, and or our police and security people, so this this is a very sensitive item. I just literally recall when I was council, we had a council person, and we had someone became nervous before council. And our council person mentioned to me, I have kids, she literally got afraid because of someone who was there making a presentation and the action of that gentleman. This is something that really needs to be highly secure, and as the army, as the army sometimes will say only if you have a need to know should you be dealing with this kind of stuff. And but otherwise, I would make a motion with that caveat, only only a need to know should, anybody should be getting into the the location of these panic buttons.
Support.
Thank you, it's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier for the approval of the authorization for the purchase and installation of panic alarms in the forty-sixth District Court and City Departments. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cruz?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Our next item is the C two R two grant for the San Marino Homeowners Association well.
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn, requesting authorization uh pursuant to our November eighth presentation to council for the uh council to authorize the mayor and city clerk to assign to sign an agreement between the city and San Marino Homeowners Association acknowledging that the city will be the fiduciary of a grant from the state of Michigan, EGO uh in an approximate amount of one point two two million dollars to facilitate the connection of water and lead uh water lead service lines for the remaining ninety-nine homes uh within the subdivision. Uh, as I indicated, we discussed this on November ninth. Um, this is, we're finalizing the numbers with the state. Uh, but the state has requested that the city and San Reno put together uh uh an agreement. And the city attorney's office will prepare this agreement, will have the mayor, uh the homeowners association sign it. And the uh mayor and clerk sign it as well, the um uh that we agreed to accept the grant, we agreed to be the fiduciary, we agreed to uh waive the linear front frontage charge of thirteen fifty per foot. Uh, we would, uh, the homeowners association would agree to allow us to place a lien on the property uh in the amount of that uh front footage charge waived. Uh, the the well would be restricted for uh uh irrigation uh purpose o- only. And the actual coordination of the physical connections and uh verifications of the uh of the uh wa- of the well being used for irrigation only. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions or comments, uh, Councilman Cruz?
There we go, sorry, nothing for me, I'm just glad to see this kinda come to fruition and that uh we were able to come to a meanable solution to um remedy this situation, so uh I will be definitely in favor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Frazier?
I do have a couple of questions, I've been thinking about this. Uh, currently, the homes are attached to the well and the end result is we're gonna de-tast the the well from the homes and make it available for the homes to use or however, for irrigation. If, if we connect the city water to the lead lines going into the house are we indemnifying ourselves that uh if there's any problem that is borne by the homeowner? Or are we, are we buying into that if if they find out that? And I certainly hope not, they've tested, find out that there's uh some problem with a with a lead line such as lead or something. Who's responsible, is it responsibility, is it to repair that?
Eh, once the line is installed, there would be a warranty for that line installed, the new line connecting from the city's service to the house. We would have a limited warranty, and that warranty would probably be provided with the state statute. We would have a limited warranty, and that warranty would probably be provided what the state statute provides of eighteen months under code. After that, if the line were to break ten years from now, that line would be the, like any other line in the city, would be the responsibility of the homeowner. That is a very infrequent item. I know from time to time, the city gets requests from entities who would like to sell our residents' insurance, and I'm told that, and in my thirty-five years in local government, I've only seen that happen once, where a lead service line broke. So, but it would be covered, the city would be responsible for a warranty period, and frankly, we'd have a contractor that we default back to, that your line did, you know, broke for some reason. We'd have an issue where we'd have them, the contractor, come out and repair that. But after that, it would be the homeowner's responsibility, and I'm making a note, we'll make sure that the final contract makes that very clear.
Okay, and are we going to stub off the current lead into the house, so the homeowner can make? Go ahead.
Yes, yes, we are going to stub off, homeowners may keep that for irrigation if they choose, have an outside hose bib if they choose. The, we had, we had twenty of the homes physically inspected, had a private contractor go in and look at what the scope of work is, and we use that in putting together and determining our prices for this project.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions from me on this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, thank you.
And Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I'm a hundred percent for this. I've shepherded this project for the last three, two to three years, and I want to give the San Marino Homeowners Association a big round of applause for being progressive and being forward-thinking, and being able for the city to work with them. Because when we ask for something, they, the leadership there, being over backwards to facilitate the city's needs to get this grant through the state, so this is a plus-plus for the city, and it's a plus-plus for the homeowners association there, so naturally, I'm a hundred percent for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Seiver?
I'm glad to see this development take place, and hopefully soon we'll have the whole issue of well resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council?
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve C-2R-2 grant of San Marino Homeowners Association well.
Support.
Okay, I think I heard Frasier first, so.
That's just because it's voice louder.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frasier, for the approval of C-2R-2 grant for San Marino Homeowners Association well. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Frasier?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I want to just thank councils for supporting this. I would like to thank Councilman Brightwell, he has shepherded this, and also, I've got to give a shout-out for Councilman Hoskins and State Representative Moss, who got some of the early meetings, conversations going with EGO to make this happen. And I just want to, just for a note, we have roughly three hundred and fifty homes still on well in Southfield. This will knock out a hundred of those, and nothing wrong with being on wells. And then last week, the legislature did act on fifty million for water, and we, I've had two conversations with our lobbyists, I'm monitoring that very closely. Maybe it's some testing for those remaining folks to find out what kind of conditions we're dealing with. May very well be safe. Most of these wells were last tested when they were initially installed years ago, and this is a topic you'll see more of in twenty twenty-two. The actual physical San Marino installation, and a better understanding of our other residents who are on wells. Most of those individuals are on individual wells and not community wells. We're real fortunate that, to knock out a hundred at one time is quite a bit, or ninety-nine at one time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's no ordinances tonight. Next is communication. And the city of Southfield, city council has established the following rules of procedures for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing city council, and any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting, and if the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct the clerk to mute their microphone. With that being said, Madam Clerk, would you please open up the lines for anyone that wishes to speak under communications? Would you please press or push star three to be recognized by the clerk? Thank you.
Caller number ten, prefix nine two four. Can speak, you're unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just wanted to call in to speak once again about ordinance one seven four two. I and a number of other business owners in the city of Southfield have called in in recent weeks to discuss this business registration ordinance that was input. There are several people in our business community that take issue with a lot of the language and the way this ordinance was written. We feel that it's going to be harmful, more than helpful, to a number of businesses in the city, especially under the guise of public safety, which is what it was for, it seems. So I just wanted to know if, I know last time we had a couple of questions, I know some people spoke in response, this was something that we can get put on the agenda potentially, and we can discuss the wording and the language in the document and the ordinance, and perhaps it can be looked at again. I think several people think that it should be struck down, and if not struck down, at least made to be something that's voluntary, if it's supposed to be helping businesses instead of hurting businesses, which a number of business owners think that is what is going to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm unmuting anyone else that may want to talk under here right now, we don't have anyone to talk. I want my person.
Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Evening.
Evening. I also wanted to speak about the ordinance about registering the businesses, I just wanted to just speak out briefly that I've been, I'm in real estate, and I've been in touch with numerous brokers who have all been talking about this, and extremely frustrated with the requirements that are associated with it. So just wanted to point that out, that are many people that I'm associated with that have issue with this ordinance as well. A lot of the language and the requirements that are associated with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Madam President, at this time, no one else has their hand up to speak.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will go to our council. And I'll start with you, Councilman Mandelbaum. Do you have any communications for us tonight?
I do not. I just wanted to wish everyone a happy and healthy, safe holiday season, and looking forward to coming back in person next year, and hopefully keep moving the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
I would echo that, and just wish everyone a happy holiday and a happy new year, and I am also looking forward to seeing you all in person come January. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frasier?
Yes, I have a couple of things. One, one question, and that is, a couple of presenters tonight.
Oh, I think we just lost you. We cannot hear you, Councilman Frasier. Okay, well, we'll wait if he can come. Are you back on, Councilman Frasier?
All right. Something must have happened, he's on, and he's not muted, so I don't know what happened.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes, Madam President, I mean, we've heard for a couple of weeks, different meetings about this business ordinance. I would like to at least bring it up for discussion, just so that people that may not be fully familiar with it understand what it is and why we've moved in that direction, if we could put that on a future agenda. That would be in my mind, I think, something good for us to do.
Okay, that came from planning, so we can ask Planner Crowe if he would bring me back and have a discussion at our next committee of the hall?
Okay, sounds good. And also-
I believe it's in review right now by our legal department.
Okay, whenever the time is appropriate. Yeah, whenever the time is appropriate to do so, but I don't want to let it just hang, I just want something to be said in response to it. And then, secondly, I see we have a travel expense report approval for the president for attending the conference. This is the MML MA, Mayor's and Presidents Institute. I'd like to move approval of that.
I support that.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the expense report for Lenny Taylor.
We haven't finished communications.
Right.
Well, we're in the council right now, correct?
Yes. Yeah, we're in the council portion, though.
Communication, we can always go back to it.
Well, we, the, it's-
Communication's over with. Nobody else wanted to talk.
Yeah, we're in the council right now.
Yeah, you're right. Mr. Cruz?
Madam President, currently, we have a motion on the table.
I support.
To approve it. It's already been supported by Councilman Brightwell.
Right.
Yep. I guess, would it be appropriate to say, are there any questions or discussion? Did anybody need to have a discussion, or? And then if not, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins? Hoskins? Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Mandelbaum? Taylor?
I abstain.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Frasier?
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right, and just again to all our residents and to all my colleagues, happy holidays, and as everyone has said already, looking forward to seeing everyone in person very soon, so be safe and take care.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes. As usual, I have something for our veterans. The Oakland County is offering a veteran resource fair, resource fair on December sixteenth, from AM to noon. And it's being located at the Plumbers Union sixty-eight in Madison Heights. The resource fair, the resource fair will, this is fairly interesting. The Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency will have a hundred-dollar Myers gift card. The Oakland County Veterans Services will also have a Myers gift card in the amount of fifty dollars. There will be other items for veterans with respect to job, job placement. There will be gift bags, gift boxes given out, including food and produce. So that's on December sixteenth, and if you're interested in attending that event, please reach out to Mr. Tyrone Jordan at the Oakland County Headquarters. His number is two four eight, two eight five, eight zero one to pre-register, and also, you can also reach me here at City Hall, two four eight, seven eight, five one five zero. And also, I want to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. And we look forward to everybody back in January. Safe and happy. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I also agree with my colleague, Councilman Cruz, with reference to the business registration ordinance. I'd like to see that come back. I thought we did discuss that there were going to be, someone was going to review it, and it sounds like the city attorney presently is, so I'd like to say thank you, and hopefully, some of the concerns that have been expressed during our meetings from the gentlemen that were speaking this evening can be answered. I would also like to thank all the people that were involved in our tree lighting ceremony that was held on December third at City Hall. It was an absolutely beautiful evening, the weather could not have cooperated any better. It was so good to see such a nice turnout from the Southfield community. Many people commented just how beautiful and lovely the campus was, and personally, I was happy to bring it back to City Hall where the tree lighting ceremonies used to be years ago. The entertainment on the stage was fantastic, and it was just, it was just a really beautiful evening. People were social distancing, enjoying everything that was set up from the, you know, roasting of the marshmallows to the hot chocolate. you know, roasting of the marshmallows to the hot chocolate. There was a hot dog vendor there. And I, again, I'd like to personally thank everyone that was involved in the tree lighting ceremony. Like my colleagues, I also would like to wish everyone a very happy holiday season and a happy and healthy new year. Please stay safe. Stay safe, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you and the community in two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you. And I echo all the comments that's already been said, and thank you, Council, for approving my expense report. I do want to wish Lisa Hawkins a happy birthday today. Today is her birthday. Hope you enjoy it. And I wish all the best holiday season and stay healthy and take care. And I'm looking forward to us meeting in person next year. That's going to be very nice. We are going to be practicing our social distancing and following all the CDC guidelines and protocol for safety. But I am looking forward to that as well. So thank you, everyone. And until next year, we'll meet and stay safe.
Madam President?
Yes.
When it was my turn, I didn't realize, but my iPad had decided that we talked long enough and shut down. So I had to restart it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, but I would like to say happy holidays to everyone and be safe. Safe distance, wear your mask, and make sure you get all the shots that you're supposed to get so that you can protect yourself and those around you. And I have a couple of, a couple of items I'd like to mention. One is we had two presenters tonight that purchased their, wanted to purchase their stuff without competitive bidding. And my question is, do we have a list of things that can be purchased without competitive bidding? I'm familiar with the, the one that we normally use for supplies and all. But I heard a couple today that were kind of strangers to me.
We can ask Nikki Lumpkin.
Okay.
Fred, unless you. I'm sorry, Nikki, are you on the line? Okay.
Apparently she went home. The second thing is next year will be the first time that Juneteenth, Juneteenth will be celebrated as a national holiday. And I just wonder if Southfield has anything in offing to celebrate Juneteenth next year. I know our church is in Royal Oak, and the city of Royal Oak has already come to our church and said, we're going to celebrate it. Do you want to be a part of it? And of course, we do. So just a thought I put on the table.
Great, thank you.
I can respond to Councilman Frazier.
Yes, please.
For the last two years, we've had a standing Juneteenth committee. And we certainly have put things on the calendar, the city calendar for Juneteenth. And we'll be, it's a collaborative effort between the AKAs, the Deltas, the historical society, Parks and Rec, my office, probably leaving out a couple of other, other people, but absolutely, we are planning. We didn't do a day either. We had a whole week of activities.
Thank you. Madam President, if I could.
Yes.
Just thanking the mayor for that information. I think it sounded like, though, Mr. Frazier would like to make sure that council is involved in this standing committee. At least I would. Yeah. So can, Mayor, can we be involved in this?
Absolutely. Was never closed. My office just facilitated it. Other people came forward. Also, the library was involved, but it's open to anyone.
Okay, great. We look forward to hearing from when you guys, when you start meeting.
Thank you. Anything else from council before we turn it over to the mayor? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Mayor?
All right, good evening once again. First of all, I'd like to report on the big rake. This year was very successful. We had about three hundred and fifty volunteers. We did a hundred and three yards, some of them twice because of late departure of leaves from trees. And we give a very big shout out to Lawrence Tech. Three hundred volunteers came from Lawrence Tech. We also had volunteers from Applied Imaging, a local company, the Muslim American Society, New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, and youth soccer team. And then some people who repeat, they come repeatedly, Donna Crosby, Michael Benison, Robert Johncock. Again, it's a very successful program, and we appreciate the donation of bags from Lowe's and Great Lakes Ace Hardware on Greenfield at Twelve Mile. And then, secondly, I'd like to report, as you know, we had very high winds on Saturday. And once again, we had power outages in the city of Southfield. The report that I received just prior to this meeting from DTE, which by the way, has been a much, much improved their communications. They had a hundred and sixty thousand customers, not just in Southfield, but in the metro area without power. They brought in eight hundred linemen from out of state and had a total of twenty-two hundred people working to restore power. At this point, about ninety-six percent of the customers, the power has returned. And the DTE expects that the, by tomorrow morning, all businesses and residences, residences that lost power will have it restored. And I am appreciative that DTE, after a wave of criticism, has improved their communications to their customers. And as with everybody else, I want to wish our Southfield community the very best of the holidays. We've been through some rather sad and trying events as well as the continued surge of the pandemic. So please, everyone, really embrace the spirit of the holidays and hold your friends and family tight. Good night.
Thank you. City Administrator Zorn?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple reminders. This Friday, December seventeenth, is the last day for leaf pickup. Want to just do a quick review for council and the public on Thursday, December twenty-third, City Hall. And the library will be closed in observance of the Christmas holiday. We're closed the twenty-fourth as Christmas Eve falls on the Friday. Christmas Day is Saturday. We're closed Sunday. We're also closed on the December thirtieth. Thirtieth for, for New Year's Day. So it's a little bit the way the holiday falls. Also, I just want to recognize, Councilwoman Banks touched on it, the tree lighting event. Parks Department just did a phenomenal job. And then this Saturday was the Soulful Santa event with over seven hundred children going through the event. Library was part of it. Our police were part of it. I want to recognize the police department for what they did with their Santa sleigh event, a real community building event. Just recognize the Southfield Goodfellows for their assistance to our residents this time of year. There have been a, a number of changes code is made to the business registration application. Those have been forwarded to the city attorney's office. We will work with council leadership to guide that through the appropriate committee and then take that item to the full council for a review as well. I want to thank council and the community for their support for the last year. Two thousand and twenty-one has been a very trying time for all of our employees managing our way through the COVID pandemic. We look forward to the opportunities of twenty twenty-two to continue to do many things for our community. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Good evening, Madam President. I don't have anything further to add. Work together with administration and the coen of enforcement regarding the business registration and make a presentation in the new year. And so I would just like to wish everybody a happy holidays and happy new year.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Good evening to everyone, as others have already talked about. Happy holidays to everyone. And I would first like to thank my staff and IT. This concludes twenty-one months of remote meetings, although it was not always easy, it was necessary. And we put a lot of time and effort into each meeting that we had remotely, so I would be remiss if I did not thank the IT staff, Wendell, Rick, Renee, Marvin, and others, Ed, who have assisted in the meetings along with my staff, Rachel, and Nicole, and Amber, and all those who had a hand in these remote meetings, as we did. Have to change it up relatively quickly. And for the last twenty-one meetings, we were meeting remotely. And as other people have said, tonight, the country has embarked on eight hundred thousand COVID deaths. So although we may be COVID fatigue, this is serious and continue to practice social distancing and be well in moving forward with this holiday season and be prayerful and be kind. Thank you. And also, well, I also need to thank Cable as well for, for their help in, in these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Treasurer?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to inform our public that the winter tax bills have been mailed out. We used a new company this year for, this is the first time we're using them for the winter tax bills mailing. And there were a few issues that came up in that mailing. And so because of that, one of the major things was that there was an insert envelope that was, that was left out by the, by that company. So they will be hopefully sending out a new shipment of tax bills. It's going to be duplicate of the same ones that people received, but it should have the, the insert envelope in there so people can send back in their tax payment. And the nice part is that the tax bills are thirty-eight percent lower on average for most homesteaded properties in Southfield. So hopefully, people are able to enjoy the savings and be able to buy something nice for their, themselves or their family for the holidays. And want to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year. It should be a healthy and healthy one for everyone. And I look forward to seeing everyone soon.
Thank you. Is our city planner still on?
Yes, I just wish everyone a happy holidays as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our city assessor?
Good evening. I'd just like to remind all residents and veterans that our December Board of Review is tomorrow. It will be the final opportunity to claim a veteran exemption, poverty exemption for twenty twenty-one. Also, principal residence exemption for the current and three prior years or any clerical errors or erroneous uncappings for the current one prior year. I'd also like to remind veterans, they're receiving their letters right now for explanation of benefits to come file for their twenty twenty-two veteran exemption. And besides that, I'd just like to wish everybody good holiday and happy new year. Thanks.
Thank you. Our city engineer? Okay, she's not on. And we have nothing to schedule. I do want to just ask council to be mindful. We'll be off for the next three weeks, but if some urgent city business comes up, we may have to do a meeting, call around to have a meeting set up if we need to, if something urgent happens. So just be mindful of that. If you get a call or an email or a text or something, we might have to schedule a, another meeting in between, even though it's not on our books. And most, most of us are, are available. If not, you know, we'll deal with that as it happens, but just in case. And with that, if, does anyone have anything else for business tonight? Hearing no other business, I now declare this meeting adjourned. Happy new year and happy holiday season to everyone. Thank you.